Good evening. Thank you for joining the Harrison School District to April 30th, 2020 combined work session and board meeting. Madam Secretary, if I could get a call to order and a roll call?
A roll call? Yes.
Yes ma'am.
Regina English?
I'm here.
Jeannie Odoosco?
Present.
Linda Pugh, I'm here. Steve Seibert?
Here.
Cory Williams?
He is present. He just does not have audio at this time.
Okay.
Alright, thank you. All present accounted for. I would like to thank everyone for joining us this evening. We posted that any members of the public desiring to address the board on any topic related to boardwork must have submitted their request by 12 noon on April 30th. Norma does have some of those and we'll be going over theirs later. So we're gonna move on to adopting the agenda. So, alright, so we're at GC21 Board will function as a single unit. If I can get a motion?
Has everyone had a chance to review this evening's agenda?
No, I'm taking minutes now.
I would, I would move to adopt the agenda as presented.
A second.
Okay, so. Mister Seibert, I think it was seconded by Mrs. English. Sorry Cory. That's okay. So, motion carries. All those in favor? I think I did that backwards. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, now the motion carries. If I could just remind everyone that's not speaking, if they commute themselves, we're gonna get a lot of noise if everyone's talking in the background. Alright. We're on to three matters reserved for board action. We're gonna do a 3.1, a temporary adoption of virtual meeting. So our goal is to have a virtual meeting today, the proposed. Sorry, I'm trying to open it. Technology isn't gonna be my friend, I'm sorry you guys. Has everyone went over the proposal? This is only gonna be temporary for this meeting and then when we meet again, we'll have to adopt something more permanent. Has everyone had a chance to review it? Cause I can't even get it open at this point.
I, I have. There was, it looked like there was a cut and paste and there was a note in there that said, inject local matters or local specifications here that probably should have been deleted, but for this purpose, if it's only for this meeting, it's probably insignificant and could be left. It was about halfway through, there's an italicized that probably should have been blanked out, but it.
Second paragraph.
Outside of that, yeah, I would have, I would have no other comments on it. And I'm okay with it the way it is, just for a single meeting.
Sorry, I thought I heard someone else say something.
Again guys, just a reminder to mute your mics if you're not the one talking.
Alright. So if everyone's had a chance to review other than the changes that Steve suggested, just for this temporary moment for us to all be present for the meeting. Does anyone have any questions? And is everyone in agreement for that?
Yes. Yes, I agree.
Yes.
Alright, it's really hard without seeing your guys' faces.
I know.
Alright, everyone's in agreement? If I can get a motion?
So moved to approve the temporary notice of virtual board meeting items as presented.
Second, Steve Seibert.
Alright, so moved by Mrs. Pugh, seconded by Mr. Seibert. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And aye, motion carries. We're gonna move on, now that we're all present and accounted for. I know we did, we did roll call, but if we could just double check and get, Linda, could you state your name and where you are? And then Regina, can you state your name and where you are, just for the record?
Yeah, Linda Pugh, I am in San Antonio, Texas.
Regina English, I am in Pearl City, Alabama.
Right, and the three remaining board members are here in the boardroom and accounted for. So, let's move on to 3.2, the resolution for easement of Carmel. We already voted on this as a board. Wendy, do you have anything to add? Or you or John? I know that the city asked us to revote. Can you give us some background on why?
Yeah, the city just wanted to have a resolution. They, they're not understanding the fact that we don't usually do resolutions. We've had this issue with them before. This is something we've already approved. This is the Carmel one. It's, we're one of the first ones to have this flyover easement in there. Mark, did you have anything else that you need to add to this? Okay, so that's pretty much what it is. It's what we approved last month. Now they want to see a definitive resolution. They kicked it back to us because they wouldn't move it on.
Sorry, I was muted and I couldn't get unmuted. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, I can hear you now.
So, yeah, the, it's just a formality for the resolution and then the easement. They put it in their format. It's one of the first navigation easements. They didn't really have a format for it. So they've written a format for us to use.
It's, it's, this is Linda. It's interesting that the navigation easement. Sorry.
Go ahead Linda.
The re, the, the written easement looks different than when we saw it in a month ago.
Yes, I had the, since there wasn't, there's not one published anywhere. So our lawyer drew up the easement. When the city got it, they figured they better put out a a template and write an easement, so they wrote the easement.
Okay.
It's not, so it's something that's very new, used to just, property was designated as being in an airport overlay. That's no longer really being done. Now it's a navigation easement, so the airport, this takes the place of the airport overlay.
Okay.
Mark, does this change anything substance? Still, still pretty much the same?
Yep, the only thing that's really in there, it's, it's the city's way to not be sued. So they're basically saying it's gonna be loud and noisy and it's probably gonna get worse in the future. Because of the, the amount of traffic through the airport. So it's basically their way for anybody that's prop, that's got property or developing it to make sure that they know upfront that planes are gonna fly overhead.
Does anyone have any other questions? Cory? Steve? Regina?
No questions.
Okay, we are gonna do a single vote.
Do I need to read the resolution first?
Yes, you do, and then we'll need to vote individually, especially since we can't hear each other as well.
You ready for it?
We're ready.
Resolution for granting a navigation easement at Carmel Middle School. Proposed resolution. I move, we declare that the proposed real property, Lot 2, Hikes Peak Park subdivision number 26, recorded December 4th, 1970, under reception number 768234, located in the county of El Paso and the state of Colorado, to be granted navigation easement to the city of Colorado Springs as required for development of Carmel Middle School under development plan number
You're awesome Linda. That was long.
They've been longer.
Alright, and if no one has any further questions, can I get a motion?
I move to approve the resolution.
A second?
Oh, okay, sorry, we're having mute and unmute problems. It was moved by Mrs. Pugh, seconded by Mrs. English. We're gonna do a roll call for all those in favor, so we're gonna start with Mrs. Pugh.
In favor, yes.
Mrs. English?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Aye.
Ms. Rosco, aye. Now ayes have it, motion carries. Alright. And the next one is for Panorama.
This is coming back. Mark, have you talked to, one, they're offering to pay us. Talk about that amount. That's not, not anything we requested. But this is also one we voted on last month. And Mark, you'll just go over some of the basic details and talk about the payment.
Yeah, we, so last time we talked about it, you told me to go ahead and pursue it with the city. In order for them to develop the Panorama Park, they need to drain the park and the drainage is gonna go through our property behind the football field. They've offered $6,260 for the permanent easement, $4,810 for the temporary construction easement. It is a permanent easement, so it would be there in perpetuity. There's drawings that show the extent of the easement. It's basically behind the football field, so it's out of our way. It does connect into the drainage down near the street. That's something we'll have to pay very, you know, close attention to when they get to that part of it, to make sure that they don't disrupt our drainage. It also drains that way. Are there questions on it otherwise?
Mark, I wanna make, that they've addressed, they're aware that we're concerned about the drainage into our area, and they're gonna work on that?
Correct, yes, they're aware that we don't. The concern is that they have it draining and then doing a right-hand turn at the very end and draining out to where there's a storm inlet, stormwater inlet. That right-hand turn traditionally on some of our other properties is difficult. A lot of times it'll take a concrete buttress wall or something similar to that, or it'll wash onto our neighbor's property, so we've already talked to them about making it a 45 and a 45, kind of curving it around and also putting in some concrete. So we'll watch them closely while they're putting it in.
So I have one question. Sorry, this is Jeannie. With that easement, if there's drainage issues with the neighbors, who does that fall on? Does that fall on us? Is the school district or does that fall on the city?
Once they put in the easement and their drainage, it's an underground pipe that comes out there. There should not be an issue if they develop it correctly and we'll watch them. We drain down the same way surface. So it comes out right at that very corner on Farnsworth Drive. It'll surface and then it'll go into the drains. I don't, I'm not sure who it would fall to. It's their drainage and their easement, and I would assume it goes to the city. We're just providing them a path to do it. So, they're gonna be accountable for the drain, for the proper operation of the drain, for the maintenance of the drain. It's gonna be their, their system.
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
You bet.
I was gonna ask Steve, does that make sense to him? He's more knowledgeable about this than I certainly am.
It, it does, and my, my immediate thought went to, I know that, that Pueblo sued us for, for storm drainage and as long as there's not a, any type of residual liability that we would have for the, for the stormwater. And I guess since the city's constructing it, we would, there, there probably wouldn't be, but that, that would be my only thought.
Well, the city's constructing it and they improved the construction diagrams. They approved how that works and it connects into their stormwater system. So they're gonna own that part of it. We won't have any liability from Pueblo.
Does the money, is, is the money a damage waiver or are we actually transferring the property? Is it becoming their easement?
It's, I guess I would consider it as a, you're giving up the permanent rights to it. So that's a fee that they're willing to pay, but it's still our property. But you're permanently giving up rights. This is the first time I've ever seen them pay. And we have a lot of easements and most of them are utility and we never, we pay, they pay us a dollar normally. Just as a, hey, here you go. This is new to me. I've never seen a, a payment for one. But we are giving up the permanent right to place a building there, to dig there, to do any of that, but it's not property that I would foresee us developing.
And, and yeah, it's, it's out on the edge, so it's really probably not anything we would have. It's, it, it just seems unusual to me that they would be paying us outside of just a, a damage waiver for, for property that is ours just with an easement, but I mean, I'm comfortable with it. It's, it's just not, not something I've ever been, I've never, I'm not familiar with. I've never, I've never seen them do that before either.
I haven't either. It's not normal and we can turn it down.
The memorandum of agreement, item number five. If you scroll about a quarter of the way down on the attachment, it says, "The compensation shown in this agreement is full and just compensation for all the land easements, improvements, and damages of any kind occurring out of or related to city acquisition of a problem." Property, I'm sorry. I guess that doesn't answer so much the question of, I was trying to see if there's some explanation in the form about what they're buying.
There's verbiage somewhere in here also that they're responsible for all damage that they do while they build it and any damage that they cause.
I think that's what I just read.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Well, I, that, that being said, I'm not averse to, I'm not averse to accepting the, the, the payment for it.
No, we're not averse to getting paid?
No, no, that's, that was not my position at all. Don't, don't, don't mistake, don't mistake that for, for hesitation and, and taking the money.
I would simply say, if this has not been reviewed by our legal counsel, that we may want to approve it pending the advice, you know, any contrary advice from legal counsel of ours.
Did we not have this go to legal counsel already?
Mark, when you sent over to be reviewed, both of them?
No, I did not send them to legal. Nobody asked me to send them over.
Alright, so the Carmel one was?
Carmel, we originally went through our lawyer and he developed the easement. And then he looked at this, because this is just the city, like I said previously, taking ours and saying, okay, we gotta formalize it to the city document. So he has seen, he actually developed the first one. So.
Sorry, I wasn't clear on that. So yes, on Carmel, it had went to him previously, but no on Panorama?
No on, the easement part, he has seen. He hasn't seen the other addendum of agreement. Thing.
For Carmel?
For Panorama.
For Panorama.
Panorama has this addendum, addendum of agreement that you were looking at previously, A5. He has not seen that. But I can send it all to.
Is this something that needs to be voted on now? Cause I think it's within reason to have the attorney look at that before we vote on it. Is anyone in disagreement with that?
No, I agree with you Jeannie. I think it should go to our attorneys prior to us voting on it.
I know Steve's more of an expert in that area, so I just wanted to touch base real quick with him too.
I, I, yes, it, it, I would be more comfortable with it having been reviewed prior to, unless we need to, unless it's very, very time sensitive and, and we need, it's, if it's gonna hold something up and we need to do a, a resolution vote pending legal review, I, I would be okay with that if, if, if absolutely necessary. But if we have time and can get it done expediently, I, I don't know what we as a board have for our next meeting, if we're going to, are we gonna stay back on our regular schedule? Have we really talked about?
I think that's coming up down below.
Okay.
I, I would, I was gonna say, I would agree with Steve. If it's time urgent that we could make a vote pending it being cleared by the lawyer, and I'm not sure if anyone can tell us how time urgent this is.
I think the city, the city wanted us to to first make sure we were happy with the money amount, those kinds of things. I know that they want to do it this summer. I think they would be happy to just hear verbally that that board is in agreement with it pending legal review from the lawyer. But other than that, I don't think they need it necessarily voted on. They just wanna know that there's agreement from the district to proceed under the terms that they've outlined.
So I would suggest that since the majority of the board members have agreed to have it be seen and looked at, that we'd go ahead and not vote on it now and have an attorney look on it and revisit that the next time we're together, which will be before summer. Everyone's good? Regina, you said you were good. Cory?
Yes, I'm good Jeannie.
I'm fine, yeah.
Thank you. Alright, so, Norma, you've got that right? Okay, alright, we're gonna move on then to public comment. We're almost on time too. You're making such a good job here. Hey, so, um, public comment is interesting this round, so I'm just gonna read all this the way it's stated. Members of the public who address, who desired to address the board on any topic related to boardwork are welcome to do so. Speakers, it's, we don't have speakers, we have remarks, so. So I'd say, on average, speakers get three minutes. That's not gonna happen tonight, so what's gonna happen tonight is Norma's gonna read. We have three public comments. Norma's gonna read them. We're gonna listen intently and we obviously don't respond, so we'll take next steps on those as those come up. And then we'll move on to five. So, Norma, whenever you're ready.
Okay, I'm sorry, here I am. I received three emails, which is what we had posted. And the first one was from, her name is, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get, Nicole Trujillo, and she is a parent, it looks like it, she's from Sand Creek. Her first one was, her first comment was, "Hello, I saw the post about the meeting due to COVID-19. I'm not sure what all will be discussed, but if you have any say whatever about returning to school next fall, I am begging that school returns back in August. The homeschool stuff is just not that great and it's hard for working parents, especially ones who have children that need extra help with their work. Please, please do whatever you can to have school resume this fall. I'm afraid many kids are gonna be set back by this long-term home stuff. I appreciate any info or help getting back, getting school back." I responded and thanked her for her concern and should, let her know I would be sharing it with you. And she responded, "Thank you so much. My only other hope other than school returning in the fall is also that Sand Creek location be allowed to have early connection, summer care resumed this summer as well. A lot of parents are dependent on this location for summer care, so we're really hoping the kids can return there this summer. Thank you so much with, for your help with these issues." And then I received an email from Angel Archuleta from Soaring Eagles. She said, "I'm a parent of a student who attends Soaring Eagles. I was wondering if there are any loaner computers for my student. My daughter is currently missing out on activities the teacher is having. She is currently on an IEP." And that has been referred. Then, the next one, I'm sorry?
Oh, referred to who? That's been referred?
Yes, it's to Mr. Yates. And then he will be able to work between technology and, and sped. I am an, the next one is from Matthew Cleland. "I'm an English teacher and the peer nominated teacher of the year for my building. I am interested in why," I'm sorry, he's at Spring Creek. "I'm interested in why Harrison School District is ordering teachers back into Spring Creek Youth Services Center, a locked detention facility at much greater risk of transmission than the population at large. Despite their stated commitment to distance learning in order to maximize the safety of both students and staff, a recent executive order from the governor allowed for an exception to resume in-person teaching at these facilities. But that exception isn't a mandate, so why does the district think it is now safe for us to open more pathways for infection to some of the district's most vulnerable students? This should especially be considered in light of the recent ACLU class action lawsuit launched against the Weld County Sheriff for in part failing to adequately limit exposure of the incarcerated persons there." And he attached a link. And that's all of them.
Thank you, Norma. That's a lot more than usual. I thought that was exciting. I'm just saying.
I was excited too. I wanna add one more thing, please. The, our nutrition staff has been providing meals, then we're gonna hear more about that later. But you and the district provided a meal for our employees, for them to take home and share with their families. And I wanted you all to know that we received several thank yous. People felt appreciated and they were really glad that they were recognized that way. And I just wanted to share that with you all.
Thanks. I know we don't, we don't respond to each of these. It looks like everything was referred. But we know everything's difficult and we're just filing, following the best guidance possible put forward by the governor and we'll continue to do so. I think Wendy and John have done a great job of thinking of what's best for everyone, not just our students, but their families and the community at large, so we appreciate their hard work. And we're just gonna continue to move along to the best of our capabilities in regards to all the things that are happening right now. We just have very little control of any of this, so. I know, you guys do great. I know John's on there somewhere too. I can't see his face though.
There, I'm here.
So we're gonna move on, maybe? Oh, maybe not. Sorry guys, my computer stopped working. I don't think we're moving on. Not unless someone else wants to read five, because Linda, can you start five by there? I don't, my computer stopped working. Yeah?
5.1 would be budget updates from Ms. Shelley Becker.
Thank you Steve. I, it's just spinny mixed spinny now.
So we wanted to come with you to give you some budget updates, given the COVID situation. Just so you know, we'd worked through the budget and we had a great budget to present, and then COVID happened and life has changed quite a bit, and so we wanna give you the state of affairs as of today and we'll continue to update you, but economically, we're gonna be impacted, and so we wanna give you the information you have, so you can be informed. And Shelley's been part of a ton of different meetings at the state, which we appreciate, getting the latest and greatest information, so we can plan accordingly for our district. So turning it over to Shelley, so she can present budget updates as of April 30th.
Thank you Wendy. Can everybody see the PowerPoint up and ready to go?
Yes, it's fine.
Okay, thank you Cory.
Yes, it's here, it's here.
Okay, great. So just as Wendy said, thank you everybody. I only have, and I know I preface that every time, 10 slides, or 20, sorry. I only have, and I know I preface that every time, 10 slides or 20, sorry. But really want to, the point of tonight is to give an update of where we've been, where we're going and some of the events that have transpired probably since January. So feel free, ask questions as always along the way. And I'm waiting for my PowerPoint to move. Okay, here we go. So I'd like to start real quickly, just highlighting at the national level, things that are going on, how that trickles down to the state. And then that, how that trickles down to local communities and what does it mean for us here at Harrison? I know I probably don't need to give a lot of discourse to this, but again, our economic outlook is extremely uncertain. And what we mean by that is just like the pandemic that has hit the past couple of months. It's almost like the other piece now, what's happening to and throughout the economy? The impact, not only is it one of such great uncertainty, it leaves a lot of unknowns, but what that may look like moving forward, at least on an interim basis. So at the, at the national level, just as we're all catching the news, if not daily, hourly, radio, TV, neighbors, social distancing, it's continuing to change and will change. Today, uh, the past two weeks, I've been quoting unemployment, the loss of jobs. Today, 30 million Americans have filed across our country for unemployment. That now is one in six. Last week, it was 26, before that, it was 22 million. So I know you guys listen, how I regurgitate numbers. And so it's a little bit surreal how I'm quoting high-level unemployment numbers. That's also leading to, as we know, again, a week ago, more temporary business closures. And I think so much remains to be seen with that. And also a piece that has an impact and for the state and school districts is the decline in the global price of oil. And we've all seen that with the extremely low prices in gas. With that, we know at the federal level, they're working to deploy federal resources in addition to individual stimulus funding. So we'll have a few more conversations about that as well. We've all heard about the CARES Act. And I came across this pictorial recently in another meeting and I wanted to share it with the board. We're hearing words here, 2.3 trillion. So just thinking about that is what the CARES Act. And if you can see my cursor, I'm moving to this little yellow section. And I'm not by any means, when I say little, but when you look in the context, state municipalities, 175 billion, that is the piece of the pie that school districts fall under. So again, as we look at what's happening at a national level and where the source to deploy resources and funding, again, not to go unnoticed, the economic piece and component to businesses and then with unemployment. So here is the federal resources, what we know. And when I literally say as of today, it will be, because it is changing and updating on a day-by-day basis. So again, what's been, there's two pots of money, so to speak. The Federal CARES Act, which is the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act CARES, that's at 2.3 trillion. The state of Colorado out of that is receiving 13 billion. And then out of that, Colorado K-12 school districts, there's 121 million. So again, we're working, I wanted, I was telling Wendy earlier, spell out the word trillion. I don't think that's one we're used to. But again, you see that amount and how it trickles down to school district. The second pot of money is, is what has been coined like the governor's pot. And that's 2.9 billion divided up amongst the 50 states, 50 governors. And out of that pot of money, so far, the information that, that is known is 44 million for Colorado K-12 school districts and higher ed. So again, why we think about 44 million, that's great. But again, as we think about dividing that between 178 school districts and higher ed. Jumping back up real quick to the CARES Act, 121 million. In Colorado, they've made the preliminary decision to allocate that 121 million by Title I allocations. And as we know, Harrison School District is one that we qualify higher than most of our peers in Title I. So as of today, that has a dollar amount of about 3.2 million. But again, Scott and I were on a webinar meeting today with CDE. There is still so much to be defined on what the stimulus money means, what it can be used for and how. So just know that when we think of the CARES Act, and again, just as everybody else, they're working as quickly and rapidly and efficiently as they can at the state. And then it rolls up to the U.S. Department of Education. Okay, we're going to drop down now to our next, next layer, state. And there's really two things, since we all have been together, I've given a PowerPoint, that have really triggered why where we are today. The first part is the March 16th Economic Quarterly Economic Forecast and Projections from the state. Ironically, was the governor's office delivered at March 16th, right, as all of the pandemic was really rapidly increasing. So the first thing we do have to advance, and that's the declining projection of state revenues from December, the last economic forecast and update up until the March 16th one. And what that is meant is that there is less revenue in their projection, which equals less budget. So you can hear, see here, too, what that meant for fiscal year 1920. That means almost 400 million less in revenue in their, that they were projected to receive. And then for next year, about 750 million. That does, with those new projections, eliminate Tabor refunds. And I know we are probably, as the board, much more entombed with Tabor than others. Okay, the second piece then is the pandemic. And these both, obviously, the pandemic is obviously the greater factor of the two. And with that, you'll see on there, it's really, as you talk about a state, I'm very amazed how quickly to mobilize, get resources and funding. And you just see here a couple of notes on emergency disaster funding. And that last bullet point was just really to say that the governor is authorized to utilize all available resources of the state as reasonably necessary to cope with disaster emergency. So all of those lead us then, again, at the state level. And I like this slide. And I know those of you that have been a part or heard budget presentations I've done before, I've used this one frequently. So what you're looking at is fiscal year 1920, this year of the state's general fund budget. And yes, K-12 represents 36% of that pie. And Human Services Healthcare, which is also Medicaid, is not far behind at 34%. So when we look at this, 70.5% of the state's general fund budget is K-12 and Medicaid. So that's not to go unnoticed, where we are in the big pie. Just a reminder and a highlight, as we're talking amongst other folks, how is our state budget funded? The two primary resources of revenue to the state are income tax and sales tax. We know right now with income tax, not only individual income taxes, the delay in the tax till July, but also when you think about sales tax, businesses are closed, are not operating. Purchasing's not happening, the whole economic piece that we coexist on is not happening. So with that, the latest and greatest today at the state is that the state is looking at a shortfall of about 3.3 billion. So again, that number will change. But again, as we go day by day, it's not to go unnoticed. What's happening at the national level, the loss of unemployment, businesses closing. Then how that happens, how does that affect here at the state of Colorado? And then we're going to see, how does that trickle down, not only to school districts, but then to us at Harrison? I know this is one that needs no introduction or additional pieces. Our local, local events, our community essentials. It's kind of like Maslow's hierarchy of needs, food, rent, personal care items. We know that this has caused many community impacts detrimental to our community, our taxpayers, our students and their families, loss of gainful employment. We know the service industry has had a tremendous impact. And a big result of that is a loss of a steady paycheck. Again, something that I know myself, Wendy, John, Mike Claudio, others, we talk about, again, we are very grateful and continue to message here at Harrison, too, not only are our employees receiving, still a monthly paycheck, continuing on a steady paycheck, a job and benefits. This is a slide, so now we're going to start talking a little bit more, what does this mean for Harrison? This slide is just to show and to represent, this is our general fund for Harrison School District and it's our revenue. And as we talk about state and local, for Harrison School District for this year 1920, 81% of our revenue budget is from the state. So we want to keep that in mind. About 18 and a half percent is from local. And when we say local, the majority of that is our local property taxes. I'm sure as folks listening to the news, you've caught a lot of what's going on at Weld County with oil and gas and property taxes. Today, Wendy and John and I also learned that our, one of our lobbyists for the Pike's Peak area, also lobbies for the, for many of the different counties and the treasures. And again, the majority of our property taxes for school districts will be received May 10th and in June. And there's still a lot of uncertainty about what tax collections may look like. So that's another piece that we're really keeping our eye on. Okay, now we're getting into where we, what are we doing? What's our action plan? And what are some things looking forward? So what does this mean for Harrison? Well, first of all, we've been conducting an evaluation of all current spending. And when we say all, we mean all. And even as, we had a meeting recently with administrators, today with like secretaries and bookkeepers, talking about what's essential versus nice to have. And we're really at that point where we really need to look at an analysis of needs. Maybe there's a pause on potential projects, evaluation of programs and monitoring and advocacy on current events. So again, know that right now, we have taken a pause. We're doing a lot of thorough analysis, review, analysis. And it literally, again, is we're changing day by day and week by week. And it very much is a collaborative. We are Harrison and it is all of us in this process. Okay. Here is where, so what I have here, the next five slides, we have five different scenarios. And this is the general fund. I apologize, my general fund header fell off the top. But I want to talk you through where we were as of March 10th and then what has happened a month later. So again, as of March 10th, schools, departments, we've been preparing our budgets, inflation, CPI. The School Finance Act has come in at 1.9%. We're really feeling good as a district. We're looking at raises, we've been through insurance committee with benefits. We're working to gather all that detailed information. So again, the main takeaway with this slide here is, as I know, one of our policies and with, that we adhere to and really look at is our fund balance percent. And here for the Board of Education, just really as we're looking forward, you know, just a high-level glance going, oh, wow, 13% is our benchmark number. So, great. We're looking at not only this year's budget, 1920, when it was adopted, but we're looking forward into fiscal year starting July 1st and then four more years. So as of March 10th. Okay, scenario number two, or however we want to talk about number two. So as of April 10th, and it literally has been happening over weeks and days, as the work that's going on, legislature has halted as the economic impacts, again, the shutdown of businesses, the loss of revenue to the state. Knowing that K-12 is the largest percentage of the state's general fund budget, within the past two weeks, information and guidance has been given out to school districts to plan for multiple scenarios. And we're going to talk a little bit, too, after these scenarios, about the timeline and why they're critical. So the first one, the scenario number two, is called flat funding. And why it's called flat funding, we're talking about like our state equalization, our per pupil revenue. And that's also known as in the School Finance Act, total program funding. So what the guidance from the state, from CDE, it's starting to get parceled out from the governor's office. And I know for Harrison School District, we so appreciate how pro-education Governor Polis is. We've personally had him visit several times. So appreciate that. But unfortunately, we are just in uncharted economic times than we have seen at least since the 1930s. So what we're looking at right now, if the funding were to be kept the same and moving forward, you look to our 13% fund balance as we scroll across here. Oh, by '23, '24, I purposely did put it in red just to highlight it. We start to dip below our 13% fund balance. This number right here, then underneath, represents that dollar amount that we would say, in order to meet our 13% fund balance, we would need to make reductions of $2 million in this year. And then again, you can see that outward in the next year. So again, we can see with all of our known assumptions and what we're modeling, that is, we're looking forward into the future. Okay, there, we have a couple of years, but by that third year out, we can just see, you know, the cumul, accumulation of the expenditures and not having an influx of really any major revenue. Okay, scenario number three. And this one is called the 1% reduction. And CDE literally has given guidance from anywhere from a 1% to a 10%. So I'm going to give you, I might as well give you that so you know what's upcoming ahead. So here we have right now is a 1%. All other assumptions the same. Only in this scenario, beginning with next year, we are looking at a 1% reduction in our total program funding. That's the School Finance Act revenue. The negative factor might be, I know many of us are attuned, we love that buzzword. That's a result of less of having our revenues reduced by 1%. Again, you can see our 13%, we've crept up a year earlier. This number in here, down here, this almost a million, 990,000 represents, in order to meet our board required fund balance policy of 13%, we would either need additional new revenue of 990,000 or to have a reduction in expenditures. I almost feel like I need a drum roll here. Okay, here we are to, here's our next scenario, a 5% reduction. And again, I'm going to denote that we have moved backwards by another year. Again, same assumptions, same considerations, same projections, only now the state has said there could be the potential possibility of a 5% reduction to total program funding. So what does that mean for Harrison? You do see in '21, '22, that does say in that year, not only does our fund balance dip below the 13%, but that in order to meet that 13% fund balance requirement, we better either have an infusion of some revenue or reductions, and that is to the tune of 3.3 million. Okay, 10%. I know myself, Wendy, John, I mean, especially, you know, finance, we've been living and breathing this. So even being in this industry, doing this work for over 20 years and then three years as a board member. So even being in this industry, doing this work for over twenty years and then three years as a board member, this type of information I will tell you, and it's a reflection of my colleagues across the state, we're just, it almost feels just so surreal and hazy that we are at this spot. And even because it's happened so quickly, over the tune of six, seven, eight weeks, what we see here is what would be considered a ten percent reduction, again, to our revenue, our total program funding. And you can see immediately for next year, our fund balance of twelve percent. We require our board policy thirteen percent. So what that says, nine hundred and eighty thousand, either again, some reductions in expenditures or an increase in revenue. And I think what's even then a bit tougher to stomach, or you start looking again, the culmination of what a ten percent reduction in revenue, because again, that's culminating over the next year. That immediately, you do see that next year, that does represent twelve million. Then we go to twenty-four million, then thirty-four million. So again, it is very, gosh, it's very, I don't know what to say other than tough situation. I mean, it really is. So I'm not sure if Wendy wants to add in or John anything as well. So CDE came out with guidance to school districts probably last week or days blurred together. And with that, their guidance is, flat funding is the best scenario. So I'm just going to drill back to our flat funding. So flat funding is the best. As the days, day by day transpire, I was hopeful that maybe a one percent might be the best case scenario. Then last week I moved up to the five percent with all the latest and greatest. And today I would say, and we'll see how Wendy and John might not in concurrence, based off the latest information and what we are getting from the state, a ten percent. Our lobbyist probably said it most realistic and straight to the point this morning, is plan for the worst and hope that it gets better. And it's really that reality of that there's no way with what's going on at the state and the national level, that cuts can't not happen to K-12. And maybe to that point that K-12 can't come out of this without having major cuts. Now, there's a lot of big words in that and what that means. And again, it's so much to unpack, you know, that we're going to start, you know, piecemealing it out and staying abreast of everything. I do want to talk a little bit about the deadline, the dates, upcoming dates, because this is really important. As we all know, the legislatures start back up on Monday. I do expect that to be crazier than normal very, because while they reconvene on Monday, work is still going on behind the scenes. For example, any bill up until, I think probably March sixteenth, March twelfth, that had a bill with a fiscal component, a fiscal impact, they are immediately going to take all of those off the table. So again, I expect we're really going to see some quick action. The state and the legislature is very well aware. They need to make some decisions and especially for school districts, because again, by state law, all boards of education have to have had a proposed budget presented by May thirtieth. The second bullet point, state economic update, May twelfth. This is unprecedented and has never happened either as well. The state does quarterly economic updates. The last one was March sixteenth. They have realized they need to do another one. They're calling it a mini economic update. But the key is, and they are hoping to have that out May twelfth, and that's to do another pulse, another take on what the revenue situation is looking like at the state and then another revenue projection. So that state mini economic update on May twelfth is going to be very key to our future economic outlook for the state. After that, they will introduce the School Finance Act on May twentieth. Again, they're cognizant that school districts, I was listening to a CFO go, we'll probably get this information on May twenty-ninth and our boards need to have had it presented by May thirtieth. They do know, folks are very cognizant of that. What is to be determined, the state funding and property tax collections? I know I've seen stories, I'm sure we all have, about cities and counties that have already taken steps to furlough maybe seasonal employees or workers. Again, with our other governmental colleagues and friends, we're all in this together. That last bullet point, potential impacts to current programs at the state level. I know Wendy and John, we've all really been attuned. One that's been talked about, for example, is the Reed Act. And we have, oh, probably about $600,000, the Reed Act is an important part, especially at our elementary schools for our students with significant reading concerns. With that, the voice and message I would say coming out of the governor's office is, he wants to do the best to have the least impact to all school districts. Commissioner Katie presented a presentation last week and out of her PowerPoint, one slide, she had three words on it, "All means all." And that's really the message that is coming out. We're all in this together. We all know it's a tough time. I'd also share with you a stat that I thought was interesting. We have roughly, probably around nine hundred thousand public students in Colorado. She had shared with us that currently fifty-five thousand students do not have a device to work from during this remote learning. And then sixty-five thousand do not have Wi-Fi access. So those are very, in my opinion, very impactful numbers. And I think just even hearing the impact, I was thinking about the public comment as Norma had read that. We all, you know, understand the situation and where we're at. So we know continued monitoring of the current economic events at all levels. And I know there's, Wendy and John are participating in a superintendent call first thing in the morning. It's kind of, I think, maybe how our days are going. We have these virtual calls. We hear the latest and greatest. What has the state done? Where are we at? We're crunching the numbers again and away we go. I can emphasize in depth, the district fiscal analysis and review at all levels. And I really emphasize this again, even to, again, our secretaries and bookkeepers. It's all of us looking at this together. What we have upcoming with the dates, so a normal course of events at our May board meeting would be the proposal of the fiscal year 2020, 2021 financial plan and budget. I made the comment there in red that if the board and superintendents would so deem, I would highly recommend changing that date to Thursday, May twenty-eighth. Literally, we are learning to be very fluid and flexible and to react and to move forward, to be proactive with the latest and greatest. So giving ourselves that additional time, because as we saw prior with the legislature, back in action with the School Finance Act not even going to be introduced till May twentieth, that will just allow for us at Harrison to have the latest and greatest. And then again, by the end of June, the board, again, per state law, will be adopting next year's budget. There has been some conversations and a lot of inquiry about could those dates be changed? And the answer to that is, no, they won't be able to. So next steps. Realistic intent and purpose in spending. Again, we've talked about essential versus nice to have. An example of that would be coming through saying, hey, you know what? My office chairs are eight years old. It's time to get 12 new office chairs. Well, you know, where we are today, is that essential or is that a nice to have? And I didn't even put on here our third category. We talked about like delightful, like wish list pie in the sky. Well, having in this situation, referencing 12 office chairs, that, you know, where we are right now is unfortunately not considered essential. Again, I can't take a focus enough to talk about a continued strategic evaluation and planning. We are Harrison. It takes all of us as we look at our financial picture, not only today, but moving forward. And the last thing, flexibility and change will be constant, will be. So what we know today, it most definitely will change tomorrow and by Monday. And I think our goal is continuing our district path and history of being financially prudent and prudent fiscal stewards, we will. But as we continue forward, we're going to be having just continually economic updates and what that may look here for us at Harrison.
Shelley, yes. You might hear about stimulus money coming in. Is it reverberating?
Yes.
No, unmuted. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
You might hear about stimulus money coming in. Just a reminder that that's one-time money. So any stimulus money that might sound great, it's one-time money. It will not be recurring, but our negative factor will be recurring. The other thing I want to remind people about is that we are advocating to whoever will listen, lobbyists, representatives, anyone, that when we're getting money or additional revenue, it's not equal for everyone, but that our students who live in poverty or have CLDE or SPED needs get more support because they need more support to make up the gap. And so we don't want to have disproportionately affect our students who are in poverty or have significant needs. And so we are advocating that giving extra money is not an equal across the board, but then they look at the needs of those students that the money is going to.
And to echo Wendy's comments on that, Shelley, myself, Wendy, other cabinet people have been engaging in these conversations. Even up to the, I had a conversation with Senator Bennett last week as part of a group talking about fiscal impact that needs to be lessened on districts that need extra help. So we've been taking steps with this. We have not presented this piece this way to our principals, but we have, we've talked with them about this. We did present this to our principals, sorry. So that they're aware that there are some tightening of belts coming. We've already started conversations about things we need to do. And we've already started putting some of those into action.
No. I think that was the most stressful presentation I've ever heard, Shelley.
I know.
I don't, I don't know that I want to say thank you right now. We knew this was coming. I think it's just a really hard pill to swallow. And I think the numbers make it even harder. I know as you were talking and showing us the slides, I got goosebumps all over. It just chilled me all the way through to just think of the changes and the things that we're going to have to make hard decisions on. And so that's really hard for us as we want what's best for our students. And I think that's maybe beyond our means right now, so we're going to have to be really creative. Because I know that we can definitely adapt as a school district beyond others. So I don't have any questions, but I'm sure everyone has something.
Could I make just one more comment on this is that, know that by facing the situation as we have, I can tell you that we are ahead of our fellow districts and that we're looking at steps and looking outside the box of creative ways to address some of these shortfalls that are coming our way. And we've already started this and we've already been truthful with you, truthful and straightforward with our administrators. That puts us in a strong place. So we are already starting to look at what we need to do.
Hey Shelley, this is Corey. Just coming into this, seeing that you're, seeing your budget dates on the agenda. You've already answered all the questions that I had, especially when it came to the school finance project and their bill going towards the state. It's a little disheartening to see those numbers in future action, if they come to fruition. But I think with you spearheading it the way that you have been, we'll be able to make the best decisions possible. So I thank you for all of that information.
Thank you. And again, I would echo to the board. I am very happy as little or as much information you want to be provided. Very happy to have you all on this journey, with me as well, Corey. Again, it really is. I've definitely had my share of, and you know, I'll be honest, of anxiety and panic attacks over the past couple of weeks, because I know what this impact is and what it means for us at Harrison. Not only what it means for all students across the state. I heard one rural superintendent in a meeting sometime over the past two weeks who said, when you hear that number about the number of students that do not have a Wi-Fi or a device, I listened to a rural superintendent, it might have been Bayfield or out in the San Luis Valley area, said, will the governor's office now pay attention? Or will we have the ability to have some broadband and internet capabilities and accessibility for our students? So I really think when it comes to state infrastructure and other things and needs, you know, definitely. Again, I'm appreciative. I heard conversations today, what happens to full day kindy funds? What happens? What happens? And again, as the state is working so closely with the Department of Ed, things even today from CD, we have to check, we'll have to get back. So again, this unfortunately, why I don't like to call it gloom and doom, very much feels that way. But the reality of just really, you know, we're going to have multiple, a Plan A, a Plan B, Plan C, Plan D, as we move forward in this uncharted time.
Two quick comments. One, obviously the scariness is just the unknown. Not knowing one percent, ten percent, eighteen percent, it could really, really be bad or may bounce back more quickly. And the not knowing is certainly the worst. The other part of it is, I've always been a proponent to the board of a strong fund balance. And if we had a $2 million fund balance, this would certainly be a far worse scenario right now. And over the past twelve or eighteen, twelve, sixteen years, we've been a relatively conservative district with our fund balance and to some, to some disagreement with that. But this is that very case that we had, we had held to. So I appreciate all of the work and no, I would not want updates on the what ifs too often. It's, you know, until, until we know something and can plan concretely. Looking at the, just how negative it could be is tough. So that's it for me.
Yeah, can you, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Yes, I see a head nod. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I got you.
I can't imagine the roller coaster for all of you looking at this daily. I agree with Steve. I don't think I want daily updates either. It's depressing enough. I commend you all for continuing to look at this and I know it's a day-by-day adjustment. On a more practical note, I would like to ask that this, your PowerPoint, be uploaded onto the board docs for the meeting so that it's part of the record. I know you just, you didn't have it in there prior, but I think if we're going to keep our, our records correct, then it should be, become part of the board docs for this agenda.
Yes, I'll make sure to get it to Norma.
Thank you.
I'd just like to have a couple of comments to what Steve was saying. When talking about the fund balance and fund balance does not equal cash. But with that talking about, there is, there's about twenty school districts in the state of Colorado that is what's called the Interest-Free Cash Loan Program. Well, obviously there's some concerns with the cash flow for school districts. And if school districts, should it be that property tax collections do not materialize in May or June and possibly into next year, it could potentially put at risk general obligation. general obligation debt and interest payments that school districts, because again, that's in June and December. Again, we're very, um, fortunate. And again, our fiscal practices, we do not participate in that, nor, um, we have sufficient cash and means that to ensure our obligations. But just know that, um, we continue to get surveys and information, um, because the state wants to be able to do what they can to help provide the cash flow for school districts. And for our Board of Education, um, Tabor, first time ever have been given the authority to utilize your 3% Tabor resources.
Oh, my gosh.
I know. But, but there is a big but with that is again, should you dip into your cash reserves, utilize your 3% Tabor? There is, it's usually about a 90 day timeframe, then that has to be paid back. Again, more conversations to come on that, but, um, as we have personally had a couple of presentations by Dee Weiser and Kim Crawford, they have been in the heart of it, but, uh, the governor, that has been made that the use of Tabor funding, um, is allowable. A positive point I would just like to echo is we talk about the economy, the stock market, what's going on? You know, there's reasons to be like bearish or bullish, if we might say. And I think a positive to this is really the unprecedented intervention in fiscal and monetary policy. Getting the stimulus funding out to individuals, you know, getting the services, businesses back up and round, uh, back up and running. They may bounce back quicker than prior. Having been reactive as our state has so quickly. So again, um, you know, there is so put some potential positives that it will be a quicker rebound than what we've seen before.
One can hope.
Sorry, I thought Regina had a comment. I heard her in the background a minute ago.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna say just, um, thank you to Shelley and everybody that's been hands on in this process. I know it's a lot of work and numbers aren't my thing. So my head is kind of just spinning, listening to it all. So yeah, we appreciate the work that you all are doing and I'm sure the best decisions will be made for our district. So thank you, everyone.
I do have one question, and I know we're going to go over bond work here shortly, but Shelley, how and if does this, I know our bond is set out and, um, you know, we have a contract and we have our bond book and what that looks like. Does any of these numbers affect the way we move forward with our bond or possible sales of our bonds in the future?
So the short answer does that is no. So thank you for asking. That is very excited. Again, we passed our bond when we did, we have the funds, we have our projects. Um, the only piece would be, um, with PFM, Chris Blackwood. Again, it's in our investment piece, but I expect that we're on top of that. So no, still thumbs up, um, good work with the bond projects and that funding stream in moving forward.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have anything else on this? That was so much, I can't even think anymore.
I know, right? Jeez.
Are we good? Steve, I see you shaking your head, but okay. You were shaking it no and not yes, so.
Taking, my shaking no is in disgust of, it's, it's just unimaginable. Yeah.
I know, and I told you I got gooseies like down to my soul. It was just hurt.
Yeah.
Okay, um, we're going to move to 5.2. Uh, Dr. Burhansel is going to talk to us about the food pantry.
So now that Shelley's shared all her information, now we get to have all the good, happy information. So thank you, Shelley. So one thing, um, in our district that we noticed right when we went out of school for COVID was, um, we had families who was really struggling with food and just basic necessities. And so community partners came together and we created our stand up food pantry at Sierra. Um, just so everyone's aware, because I love you, worked with, um, Infinity Shuttle and Harrison School District Two and Solid Rock. And it really was a community effort. And so what that looks like is churches up north still, um, do donations and they bring those donations down to Sierra, to the auto bay actually at Sierra. And that's where we have our food pantry. And then we also have written grants to get food for the food pantry. So we are serving about 50 families a week and they get items such as bread, peanut butter, jelly, diapers. We, um, have had donations of children's aspirin, which was really hard to find at the beginning, toilet paper. And it's just been a great, um, story to be able to help our community and our families who are in need. A lot of those needs come from items you can't buy on SNAP. And so that's where the diapers and toilet paper and aspirin come into play. Um, but really some families have kids and they can't take them all to the grocery store. It's not safe, or they might have a medically fragile kid who they don't want to take out to the grocery store. And so we've been working to deliver those. And actually, Ms. Roscoe has been partnering in that process too, and been helping with some of the food deliveries and the food handouts. And, um, then for the past four weeks, we've been doing a major food handout at five different locations with about 1,200 bags of food each Friday. And so I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of the great things that we are doing to help the community. Um, there's always more work to be done and always more people we can help. But, um, it's really been a proud moment to say we are Harrison and our families are really appreciating the reach out. Um, and when they share with a teacher, there's a concern, it immediately goes to the principal. The principal calls the food pantry that we've set up and their needs are met within 24 hours. And so we've been very responsive to our families and community and it's, um, made our community even stronger. And then our partners are just working together so well to ensure that we're not dropping the ball on any of our families and meeting their resources, whatever that might be.
I would like to say that.
I'm just going to toot, um, your gaze is worn for a minute. I, I know Wendy, um, has explained really about how it works, but when you walk into Sierra's Back Bay, um, we have the principals back there and they have a huge board of who's going to be there, who's going to man, um, this area. There are days in addition to the principal work, what days they're going to be there. There's two people on staff at each one. And then when the shuttle arrives, they have a full chart out there and someone's there every day for a couple hours receiving, um, the goods from other places, not, not to count even the shopping. So we have our staff and our principals and our teachers out shopping at Sam's Club with the grant money to fill the pantry for our families. And our families that are getting serviced are all families. Some of them are huge. I think we took a family of eight food. I can't even imagine having eight people, much less eight people with no toilet paper or toothpaste. And, um, the community has given so much and there's, I think we've been there, I've been there every day that I'm off and my daughter's been there every day that I've been there and just recognizing that the need is real and we fulfilled it. And then on the days that care and share comes in, um, there's thousands and thousands and thousands of bags and we're hand moving them into trucks that people are then taking to the schools and then the schools are handing out those care and shares. So I think yesterday we easily moved a thousand bags into trucks and people are just backing in their trucks and then moving them from school to school. And I've never seen anything move so smoothly. And I've worked in a lot of places where there's pantries and, and people are mobilized, but, um, the effectiveness and the hard work of all of our staff and, and volunteers is just unbelievable. When other people are afraid to go out, they've really stepped up and given it more than just running a school, more than making sure our children are educated, but remembering that our kids can't do anything if their family's needs aren't met. And so I'm just so proud of watching each of them work so hard. It's just been amazing that they're there every day, masks on. Um, I was watching Sherbin yesterday and she was trying to lift like five bags at a time. There was other people that could have lifted them, but you know, just whole families taking care of each other and just how much we love our community and put that above everything else. So I'm just so proud of all of our staff. And I know I tell them, but I want to make sure everyone knows that they're amazing every day. And when no one's looking, they're still giving it everything they've got.
Thanks for sharing that, Jeannie. I've having not had a chance to see it myself, but that's very impressive. I wanted to just reinforce, and I shared with John, Wendy, uh, earlier that, uh, when my daughter, when this all first started, one of the first calls that my daughter got regarding her kids and one of the first questions was, "Do you need anything? Do you have the food you need?" So, I mean, from her, I mean, unsolicited, she relayed to me that that is exactly the kind of message that everybody was receiving when they got calls from the, the teaching staff.
And I would say one of the unintended outcomes or a great outcome is that we're forming stronger bonds with our families and our teachers. And our families see us as more than just a place to drop off their kids for an education and that we're really becoming a community hub and a place that's a safe zone for them. So if they have a need, even if they need a gas card, we might not have the gas card, but we will figure out how to get them a gas card and how to get them transportation. And so I think they really are starting to see us for all the resources we can bring to the table and that's just going to form a stronger partnership going forward.
I agree.
If no one has anything else, um, I know our partners in this have been amazing. Um, I had Infinity Mobile reach out to me and just say, "Hey, we want to help. How can we help?" So it wasn't even just us reaching out, but having that collaboration across community. It's been really amazing. So, um, I appreciate everything you guys are doing. Any, any other questions in regards to, um, the food pantry? I can't see everyone's face, I'm sorry.
Nope.
All right, we're going to move on to 5.3 Town Halls. Dr. Burhansel.
So we had our first town hall last week with Sierra High School. And the whole purpose of the town halls, just to update, um, community, this one was actually for students also, um, about what's going on in our district, in our schools. We had about 60 people attend virtually. Um, the administration staff spoke and kind of gave updates on Sierra High School, what's happening, where they're going, how they're supporting students, what are the plans? Um, and really we plan to have these, we have planned to have another one at Harrison High School in the upcoming weeks and another one for the district on bond updates. But it's just a way for our families or our students or community to tune in and kind of hear what's going on since we can't right now be in big groups and share that information. And so, um, our last one at Sierra was kind of a trial run and it worked way better than we even thought it would. And so we're excited about using that as an inform, information session going forward for our community to keep them informed of what's happening.
Nice.
That's a lot of people to show up to a meeting. I've been to a lot of meetings at Sierra and never have I seen 60 people show up.
I was gonna say, that's more people than if we do it in person. So maybe that's our new strategy.
Might be the way to go.
We're learning so much. I'm so proud of us. All right. And so you said there's going to be one at Harrison as well?
Yes, we're working on the date and once we have that, we'll give that information to you all.
Thank you.
Is that something you'd want us to attend, like as a board, just so we have the information maybe sent to our calendar?
So they were sent to the emails. Uh, I just happen to have a lot of some time on my hands to attend that meeting and I did. And it, it is very informative for that specific school. So just to have 60 folks from Sierra, I could just imagine if we had one for each of the schools and each of the principals was reaching out to their populace to have that same kind of dialogue.
And for the bond one, I would suggest one of you is actually one of the people speaking about some of the bond work since it was a district and board initiative to pass the bond. So I think if one of you could join and just give some updates from the board's perspective, that would be helpful too. Again, we don't have a date, but we'll get that to you.
And just on the bond piece, that might be broken into two meetings, east side, west side, but we'll keep you informed because it would be good to have one of you speaking to that.
I guess when we have a date, we'll decide who's able to attend that. I think almost everyone's still working. Well, me and Steve are.
Yeah.
Some of us might even be back in town by then.
Pretty full time.
All right. Do we have any other questions?
Nope.
All right. We're going to 5.4 Educational Updates.
We've been continuing with our remote learning, between packets and online. I'm going to put a couple of things in here and then Wendy will have some comments too. Wanted to make sure you all knew that we were meeting some of your requests by our community for, uh, tech support. Uh, we've given out, I believe, uh, 19, 19 computers so far. We've been up for hotspots. We're doing those as people let us know about their needs. That's why Mr. Yates will respond to the one public comment tonight. We're trying to meet the needs. We've gotten some very good feedback, especially around the packets. Uh, we have some community members who are doing, students who are doing both packets and online learning. We're trying to mix that with the blend of the social emotional support that our students are needing. We're meeting this, Wendy discussed, their basic needs, but also trying to continue to move forward their academic needs. Part of this is still focused mostly at the K8 area on reviewing the skills they've learned and prepping them as they get ready for next year. Within this, I talked about the tech piece. We also have an additional about 100 computers. Part of these were donated to us from Pike's Peak Community College. And we have some that we've repurposed from the high school available for when we get requests from students. We also have hotspots available, uh, still have about 55 hotspots that we can use for requests as we get them to meet their needs. We're looking at a branch for next year is going to help us provide even more technology and more hotspots to our community. AJR Bo has been taking the lead on that piece. Uh, among other educational updates on the Spring Creek is still slated to go over to Cheyenne Mountain. There was a public comment tonight. We were, Dr. Claudia and I are meeting tomorrow with State regarding Spring Creek along with Dr. Cooper from Cheyenne Mountain 12 to talk about their, uh, push to have in-person inspection. And we'll be discussing how that relates to the safety of our employees and the safety of the students in Spring Creek. We're looking at this piece. Uh, there's also been some movement on looking at graduation pieces and I'll let Wendy talk to that just a bit. We can discuss that during the graduation policy update. Uh, but we have been moving forward, trying to meet the academic needs of our students while not sacrificing their social emotional leads, needs. We've had a number of, uh, teachers reaching out. Some of those teachers have been doing online connection circles, as they do for RJ, just to connect with their students and see how they're doing. Feedback on assignments for students is coming mostly through the office hours. Teachers are reaching out to each member of their, their class to talk to them how they're doing. This is K8. And at the high school, they've been very, uh, consistent in the way they've been delivering online instruction. Wendy, you want to talk to that just a bit?
Sure. Um, I think one statistic that would interest you is when we did a poll of how many participation or what's the percentage of participation, we believe we have about 80 to 85% of our students participating in some form. So whether that's a paper packet, whether that's online, whether that's I get an assignment and I do it and turn it in. Um, but that's much higher than many other districts who are seeing more of a 50 to 60%. Um, I do think the packets have been huge for our families because if you only have one device and you have six kids, that's really hard to share time. And so the packets they can pick up and easily do. Um, for our high schools, our focus has been on making sure we get credits. And so, um, credit recovery and making sure that we're going to get credits for the classes they were sitting in when we went out in March. Teachers have been calling each student individually each week, checking in with them, um, making sure our kids are ready to graduate with what they need. Our counselors are calling each senior individually currently this week and last week to find out what their plans are after school. Have they changed? Do they need support? We still have Dakota Promise going strong. Christine and Andy have been instrumental in making sure that we're on track with that piece. And we have a lot of kids looking forward to Dakota Promise. I've talked to two personally that were planning to go out of state for college and because of economic times and kind of all the changes that have happened, they've changed their plans. They're now going to go to Pike's Peak with our Dakota Promise option and transfer. So I think that's actually going to make them be able to go to college versus before they just wouldn't have had another option. So, um, I think we're excited in spite of all these changes and disruptions for our seniors that we are still there supporting them along the way and will continue to support them as they transition into their adult lives.
One of the positive side effects we've seen that Wendy talked about last week with the cabinet was that we're seeing some seniors that might've been a little disengaged before we went to online learning, becoming more engaged and doing more assignments and actually raising their grades. Uh, part of that is from the very personalized attention they're getting from counselors and teachers at the high schools, reaching out to them and pushing them to get these assignments completed. So that's been a very positive upswing on this. I wanted to let you know that going forward, uh, we've adjusted how we're doing our operations at schools and district. We're still encouraging all employees to do remote work as much as possible, but starting next week, we will have physical office hours at the district and at schools on Tuesdays and Thursdays. To try and meet the needs of our parents who need to come in and register, or just ask for help that want to physically come in and do that. We'll only have minimal essential staff at the district office and at schools. We've laid out guidelines for that, how that should look uh, within both with social distancing, both with wearing masks, all those pieces. But that's a change we'll be doing through the end of this month. And then after three to four weeks, Wendy and I will take a look at where we are with guidelines from the state. What the data from the health department is telling us, what the data from the uh, coronavirus outbreak is telling us, and we'll make adjustments based on that. Any questions?
Yeah, John, I have, go ahead Linda.
That's okay. I would assume that we're already looking at implications for the future and, and when you hear that some of the seniors are doing better because there's more interaction perhaps from the counselors and teachers that whether we continue a lot of remote or go back to the more typical school year, that we don't lose those lessons. We're learning a whole lot about how you do remote learning. Uh, was the other question I thought I had. I guess that was mostly it, that you know, there's, there's, hopefully we got a lot of lessons to learn to take forward.
We are looking at that and what we're learning from this type of engagement. We are bringing some PDN to talk about remote learning, how that can be very engaging, talk to administrators and instructional coaches. We've already started looking at three different scenarios for next year. Making plans how we might address this depending on how we come back in the fall. Whether it's a hybrid model, whether we're all back in person, whether it's all remote learning. So we're looking at the different plans we'd have to do to meet that. Even within this uh, economic crunch we're going to be facing, we're going to find ways to meet the needs of our students as we go forward. We started that planning today with our principals and we'll be continuing that over the next three weeks during admin meetings. Involving all of our district level people, our school-based admin. So we're looking at all these plans and putting those together. So we have been taking a look at the lessons we're learning.
That's great. And, and measuring the effectiveness of it is, is a question I'm not sure we have a good answer to yet. Plus, out of the news even down here today, I heard that Governor Polis said maybe we wouldn't start school again until January. Now wouldn't that be fun?
I think he's, he's make sure we know he's, that's just one of the things he's talking about. He throws out. We'll start school whether, what form it may look like. We will start it in August on time. It may be a hybrid, it may be all remote learning, but we'll be ready even to serve our students' needs even better than we are now. Because of what we're learning now and how we can give feedback to students and hold them more accountable as we move forward.
Great.
So I know I'm not the expert and you guys are, and I'm sure you're going to say, yeah, we're looking at that. But just um, some thoughts around as we look into what the future is like. I think we already have a homeschool and so the homeschool model is a lot of things are taught at home and then, and then in-class labs and in-class PE and going to school on rotation. And so I'm sure you guys are looking at that, but it's a model obviously that already exists and works for some families. Obviously it wouldn't work for everyone, but um, with so many capable people in cabinet, I'm sure um, you guys will figure that out. But I'm guessing you're going to tell me, yeah, we're looking at that.
As a, I'm meeting with Yvonne Padilla from the Homeschool Academy next week to discuss some of the things they do. We are using the bright brains within our district, but we're also reaching out to find people who have some successful models that we can look at as we go forward.
You know, an observation made today by my daughter-in-law was that homeschooling is great, except how many people are hoping they're going to be back to work.
This is true. Cory, did you have a question?
Thank you. That's okay. Sorry about that. How are we keeping up with the parents who have sped children who need that extra help and support? Going from, uh, of course, having personnel in the district helping to teach their children, how are we supporting them currently?
Brian, did you want to talk to that a little bit?
Sure, I sure will. Uh, our sped team has taken on the caseloads and divvied them up by case managers in the schools. That means the teachers who actually directly work with each student. The severe need students that we work with are being helped directly. Artistic students are being helped virtually. Teachers are making videos with instruction. And uh, supportive things similar to what they do in the classrooms, but they're doing their best to do it virtually. They're also continuing with um, uh, IP services for students who are in facilities. And we have plans if we go much longer to figure out a way to do IP evaluations even for students who are not yet identified. Or uh, were about to be identified as either needing special services or not, um, virtually somehow. So Cory, the answer is uh, that team is a very strong team, uh, directly involved with those students daily. The same goes for our CLDE students. Um, those, those teachers in the school supported by the district team have reached out and made phone calls to every one of those students continually, uh, just like the teachers. Depending on the school, some schools and some teachers have asked the CLDE teacher to take on those students particularly in their caseload, depending on their um, language proficiency levels. And so, pardon me, both populations are being served very well.
And so on that, we are going above and beyond trying to meet the needs of these students because we know they have exceptional needs. And our teachers have had guidance from their coordinators and sped and from the sped director. So there've been a lot of reach out and a lot of extra work done to try and meet those needs. We've learned some lessons that will incorporate if we have to go forward with this model for next year. We are also going ahead with planning for an extended school year session, perhaps starting in July. And that's just going to be based on the current guidelines we have from the state about gatherings.
All right. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? I can't see Linda or Regina, so.
I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm good, Jeannie.
All right. Um, we're going to have the ATU next, but I'm going to take a five because I have to. And I can't, and I, I can't man the meeting because I have to take five. So I'm going to give us a break, five minutes recon- uh, reconvening at, I don't know why I never use this clock. At 7:45. So if everyone wants to make a run for it, I'm going to try to be back right on time. Is everyone back? We're going to reconvene, 7:45?
I'm back.
All right. All board members are still accounted for. Regina, are you there? Nope, maybe Regina's not back. I'm sure she'll be back. So everyone, Cory, um, and Steve are still um, present and accounted for. We're going to move into 5.5, the ATU update. My goodness.
So you guys have the results from the ATU attached?
I'm here, Jeannie. Oh, thank you.
There's Regina. Um, so what a great year to try to pass an ATU. We, uh, CDMT had done great work, I thought. And we had a plan with what we were going to offer for raises, what we could afford district-wise and make sure we were recognizing our people for the work they do. And then right when we were getting ready kind of to make the final vote, COVID hit. And just like with our budget presentation, turned our CDMT recommendations upside down. And we actually went to the district with a CDMT recommendation for the ATMU, ATU that we will not be giving any raises right now due to the economic status. And we will look at it as we have more information. It just would not be fiscally responsible of us to offer anything that we maybe couldn't keep up with. Or if we gave that raise, we would have to let other people go to be able to afford it. And so um, that was what we went out to our constituents in our district with. And um, you'll see we had an 84.4% yes vote. And so that was really, I think, sends a positive message that our folks really appreciate that we're, you know, still keeping them employed, still paying them every month. And that we're being very open, honest and transparent that we don't know what the economic situation is right now. So that would not be appropriate for us to commit to a raise if we can't keep up with it as a district. In the ATU, the major changes, we're taking out E and R, moving to our new teacher compensation model. And then just a few tweaks with the verbiage throughout. Um, but overwhelmingly supported with 84.4%.
Do we need a vote on this tonight?
Not until May.
Not until May.
Sorry, none of us know how to unmute ourselves. We all just think people can hear us. So I guess we're not voting until May. Um, but I, judging, one, I wanted to say, um,
My husband said May is tomorrow.
Linda, can you hear me?
I can, I can. I'm sorry. My husband just said May is tomorrow.
Oh, okay. It was like, what's going on? Okay. So my other question is, most of the comments were really great, but it's my understanding then you put all raises on hold? Because there was a lot of comments saying, um, why do only certain people get raises? And so did they not read through the ATU? Those were all no votes. It looked like most were maybe ESP. Are there some raises and not others? Because what you just said was there was no raises.
So reading into what those comments were, um, when we moved teachers off E and R to the teacher compensation model. Some people did get raises with where they moved based on their education and experience. So um, some people did get raises when they were placed. They weren't actually that every teacher gets a 5% raise or everyone gets a 2% raise. It was moving away from E and R to the teacher compensation model did allow for some raises for some staff. Our proposal from CDMT was going to be to address ESPs and give them raises. But when we look at our economic status, we can't do that right now. But if we do find funding or we do um, find we're in a better place than we predict, we will go back and look at that. And so I think there was confusion, like you said, Ms. Roscoe, of um, some people did get raises, but some people didn't. But you said we didn't give anyone raises. So what is the true story? So no raises overall as a blanket raise, but moving away from E and R to teacher compensation did give some teachers a raise when they were placed.
And as our prior teacher said, we're ESPs, as we have the money to do it, it'll be the first on the list to get their raises.
And, and being part of the CDMT committee, I'm not sure what information went out when the, the vote was requested. But the number one priority of the entire conversation about salaries was giving more money to our ESPs. That never, never, we never faltered in that. That was our number one priority all the way through and then COVID hit.
And just so you know, we worked through a series of scenarios, uh, when we found out about the economic hit we were taking to see if there was any way possible to go through with any type of raise. And it was just not fiscally responsible to do any of the scenarios we came up with. I, I will also point out just to be clear that there were some APs that were moved up in salary because across the region, they were way lower than what their other, other people, other APs were making in other districts. This was a minimal group, but that was not so we would not lose those staff.
I would say the handful of individuals that, that got some pay adjustment because of coming off E and R or the APs was a very small number of individuals throughout the district.
No, and the comments were far and few between. They were all the no comments. So I just wanted some clarity around that. I think that's the highest vote I've seen on an ATU and actually even maybe the highest number of participants um, comparatively that we saw previously. So um, either way, both those numbers are positive, but I don't want to ignore um, the negative pieces and just to see what that looks like.
So I have a question. The um, APs that were previously hired, were they hired in at that same level salary? That we bumped our APs that we already had in position? So like, were they hired in at the same rate from what you all bumped everyone up to or?
Do you mean the new APs that have just recently been hired?
Yes, the new APs that recently been hired.
They, they have been placed at a competitive rate throughout the region, yes.
Okay.
One of the reasons some of our APs were lowered is because we didn't move people up. We tried to use our in-district people who showed they understand our district. Some of them were teachers and when they were hired, they were not coming in at a competitive rate. And so we made those adjustments, but new APs coming in are replacing at a competitive rate now.
Okay.
And for E and R for APs, it was not very competitive for our um, APs with lower years of experience. So our one, two, three-year APs with E and R, it was not competitive. And so when we take them off E and R and place them onto an AP compensation model, that's going to increase their pay for some of them as well, just like it did with the teachers.
Sorry, thank you. Does anyone have any other questions, comments?
I would just have to echo what, what you had mentioned a little earlier, Jeannie, was it, I believe this is, this is the seventh uh, ATU vote that I've seen. And I don't have the numbers, but I would have to very confidently say this was the, the highest participated and, and most highly approved by the largest margin I've ever seen, which really shows the, the climate right now.
Drastic time, drastic measures. She's.
Well, I think um, everyone wants a job that pays them at this point, so.
Absolutely.
I'm just saying, oh, like all of us really want to get paid. It's like way up on the top of the list, right?
Right, every vote.
So.
Mrs. Orozco, I'd just like to say thank you for pointing out the positive comments. I think one of the first comments that you see on there that talks about the leadership restored my trust in Harrison School District 2. I appreciate the transparency and proactive communication. And there's a theme of consistent communication in those comments. And so thank you for bringing that up because the superintendents and cabinet have done a great job in communicating all of these changes and, and being very proactive and letting people know what's happening so it doesn't come to them as a shock.
Yes, thank you. I know um, there was not so many positive comments in the previous year, so we're going to take it and run with it. So thank you for everyone. I know that was a lot of hard work and then it just got flipped upside down and became something totally different. So we have proven that we can adapt and overcome. If no one has anything else, like I'm going to move on to 5.6.
I'm good.
All right. So I think this is something we all really want to hear, Mr. Bristol, graduation. And uh, graduation um, updates in curriculum data.
Uh, yes ma'am. Um, this is uh, district policy. It's IKF hyphen two. This was scheduled maintenance to the graduation guidelines um, that we are working on. This is in no reaction to our current fourth quarter or anything like that. It was our scheduled maintenance to graduation guidelines as a result of just the timeline needed to, to address it. So among that, um, of the edits that were made were to um, address a change in the course pathway for high school math. Up until now, for the last seven years, we have been an integrated district, integrated approach for our high school math. And we are now switching that to a traditional pathway. And what that means is we did previously teach integrated one, two and three, um, which would have algebra and geometry and trig and statistics all integrated together. Um, but now the pathway is going to go with algebra one, geometry, algebra two. Um, and we assembled a, a group of high school teachers and other stakeholders across the district to make that recommendation. And then so that is really a culmination of a year's work of effort um, to make this recommendation, to change the guidelines. Again, it's district policy, but I wanted to let you know about some of the changes we, we made to that as a result. And we also clarified some of the language um, in high school science. We previously had language that said, there was. We previously had language that said it was going to be, um, an accelerated science. Um, we called that out, um, to be a, um, life science, earth science and physical science now. Um, and so we clarified that to make guidance to our students a little more clear, um, as well. And the last thing we added, um, would be to, um, include a line item for, um, the policy IKF two. Um, would be that, um, seniors would be required to be enrolled in at least five credits their senior year. Um, up until now, that had not been the case and that was problematic, um, for a number of reasons. Um, because we'd have early graduates, we'd have people that would be leaving at ten o'clock in the morning. Um, we'd have leadership that would be gone for most of the day. Um, best and brightest would be off campus. And then so for a number of reasons, and a couple, um, we, we put in that policy as well. Um, and so those were the, the major changes to, um, the, the graduation, um, guidelines. Um, and, um, the, the next level of work will be to see what the state says, if there's any changes to the menu of options. Um, cause it's not just seat time that's required. Um, we did not change the amount of credits. We did not change the distribution of credits. Um, we, we just clarified some of the language. Um, but the menu of options would be the proficiency measures that would be needed in order to graduate, not just the required amount of credits. It's not just seat time anymore. You have to demonstrate a level of proficiency in math and English in order to graduate. And, um, those, those are told to districts by the state and, um, we are reacting to, um, what they're advising for us.
Is that menu of options either or?
Uh, no, it is both. Um, you need to demonstrate the, the credits, um, but that's a local control and we determine that. But then the menu of options, um, is something that is, um, a proficiency measure that states, excuse me, that the CDE. Gives to, um, districts and students have to, um, meet one of those measures in order to, to graduate. Um, there's, there's a broad spectrum of things that can apply, um, all the way from a performance assessment. To a capstone project, to a, a five hundred score on SAT. Um, there, there's a number of different ways that students can demonstrate their proficiency.
Okay, that, that's what, how I interpreted. Thank you. A, a quick question. Under math, the state is recommending four credits and we're, we're only requiring three. Is that, is there a problem with that?
No, um, because. Our requirement, um, is, is different than our college bound seniors. Um, they get castled into their, their fourth credit elective class. And so what would happen is there, um, anybody who gets, who is. Um, going to be college bound, um, gets castled by our high schools to get into that fourth credit math. And then so they are, um, on track to enter their post-secondary career, um, being, um, up to college speed.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks, Andy. I think, um. It's nice to see us go back to algebra one, geometry and algebra two, which makes so much more sense when you're learning math. Cause integrated math is just. Um. So I know I don't have to learn math and my students are long gone, but for the next parents, I am so excited for them. Cause I had to stop helping my kids with math a long time ago as a result of integrated one, two, and three. So I feel the pain of all the parents at home right now. Um, so that's exciting. And I just, um, of course all these align up with the state's requirements, right, as they change requirements.
Yeah, of course. Yep, they change. Um, and that's, um. Everything we have for our policy is in line with what it's expected of us as a, as a district.
Thank you. Anyone?
No, I don't, I don't have any questions for him.
Regina?
No, I don't have any questions. I would have asked the same question Linda did, but she asked it first, cause I was looking at that too.
All right. Well, thank you, Andy. We appreciate it. I appreciate the little chart. It's very clear. I like things I can understand. So now if I could find my page, hold on, we'll move on. Five point seven. Mr. Rogerson's gonna give us a bond update, which I'm really looking forward to.
Well, one of the positive side effects of what we're going through has been that we've been able to start our bond projects early. Uh, possibly be making, uh, some headway to make sure that we're not gonna have anything delayed in the fall. Uh, it also allowed us at the schools that were going to close early to continue education remotely. So that Stratton Meadows is still delivering remote learning. So is Panorama and Carmel. Each of those are going to close early. That's allowed us to continue through the end of the year with remote learning. I have Matt Willem here who's gonna talk about the bond update. And I also wanna point out that we have put in our application for the best grant. I appreciate the work that Mark has done on that. I need to tell you that. Among the things that may be affected is the amount of money they're willing to give out for, for, uh. Best grants this year. So keep positive thoughts. We'll see how that goes going forward. And Mark's in that last piece with some input from us on the best narrative. And I'll turn this over to Matt now from Wember.
So, hey, everyone. So I know you guys, uh, we put this, uh, report in our packet, so I'll be jumping around, but I did, um, have it ready in case anyone had specific questions. But, um, all our summer projects now are under contract. Um, all of them came in on or under budget. Um, so that's a good start. Um, we've been working on moving, uh, the stuff out of all the four schools for this summer. Um, we set up a system with the help of the district for the principals to be able to go into the buildings and pack. And low numbers, um, to meet all the CDC guidelines, et cetera. Um, as of right now, we're moved out of Meadows, Hills and Harrison and Carmel's move starts on Monday. Um, so everything's been going great so far with that. Um. We, uh, have quite a few pro, but as John said, a lot of the projects were able to, um, jump ahead. So at Carmel, we've already started some of our abatement, um, and some demo. So they are, um, working around and some of the areas where we did, where the packing's all done, but none of the move equipment currently is at. Um, Meadows has begun demo. Um, Harrison has also started its demo. Um, and Hills has begun demo as well. So all, all four contractors are in those buildings and, um, working. Uh, the Fox Meadow parking lot is complete. Uh, they did, the original plan was spring break, but, um. Obviously with all that's happened, uh, we just kept working through on that one. Harrison parking. The added ADA parking spots is complete and we have started early on, uh, the Jim Mercury abatement. Which we are starting on eight schools this summer. Um, so they kind of phased through those and they've started at, um, Harrison, Sand Creek and Soaring Eagles. Um, all our contractors have been working through the COVID issues. Um, all of them have a plan in place that they've shared with us, you know, that requires social distancing, masks, hand washing stations. They're trying to get temperature readers, the instant digital ones. Um, soon as they have those, they are going to start, um, taking people's temp too as anyone enters site. Um, sort of doing everything they can to follow CDC guidelines and to keep everyone safe, to keep, uh, construction going. Um, all our meetings are virtual and then we all go and walk the sites at separate times rather than all, um. Meeting in one big space and walking as we used to typically do. All the projects are on schedule right now. Obviously, most of them are a little ahead of schedule because we got the early jump. Um, we've been tracking carefully on material delays, um, as, as we're worried about anything on the, the COVID piece. Um, so far we've had a few small delays, um, some of our mechanical equipments made in Canada and they shut down everything for a time. Um, but nothing that is affecting our overall schedule. So nothing that we can't absorb within the schedule we have going so far. Um, labor has been good too. Many contractors are dealing with labor shortages as, um. Either people are worried about coming to work or, um. You know, uh, issues with other things going on in their lives, but our labor has been good. Um, and so far I think everything's been going pretty well and we've been working through anything, um. We've seen, um, or any issue that arise similar to, uh. As Shelley spoke when she was talking about the finances, every time, uh, the governor speaks or a new rule gets changed. We have to adjust and, um, work through schedules and change schedules and, and do our best. Um, we've also completed all the furniture orders and those are ends. Uh, those typically need to be ordered, uh, twelve weeks in advance of when you want delivery, um, to make sure. Um, things are in by the end of the summer. I reached, actually talked to that manufacturer today and they haven't seen any delays yet so far. So that's also good. So that's in general, the update seems like with all the things going on, we haven't. Had anything that's overly been burdensome to our schedule or deliveries or anything else today. Any questions?
Knock on wood.
Well, I think we're pretty excited. I know, um, last time we spoke to you, I was concerned about you cutting it close back into the school year. And, um, now we don't even know what that looks like, but we know you're not gonna be cutting it close into the school year. So that was a win.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if you, yeah, that's definitely a positive. It's Meadows, which we were really tied on. Um, we've really picked up three weeks of extra construction time. So.
I think with everything going on, it's still exciting that, um, really community funds, the bond project are still, um. Keeping people employed, helping moving our district forward. You know, all those are wins. So it's easy to get bogged down in the not so great things, but really knowing that, um, construction is still money. So it's still economy money and, and it's really just, um, it helps our students and our families see that we're coming back. So. I appreciate all you guys are doing.
One of the other pieces is just the, uh. Good work that we've had done by our principals and our staff and helping move the buildings around, making sure they're clearing, clearing out their classrooms. While adhering to the social distancing guidelines we have. Uh, that's been really good to see as we bring in, uh, two new principals, our outgoing principals who are in their, in, on an interim basis. Done an amazing job helping with this move, especially Carmel and Panorama. Just some really good work going on there. And we're also going ahead with the work on the field at Harrison. By replacing that turf, uh, over the summer. Also, we're taking a look now at, uh, selecting the companies that will be doing that work. Just so you have an update on that also.
Thanks. Sorry. It always takes a minute to get off mute. Does anyone have any questions? Regina, um, Linda?
I'm good.
I don't have any questions.
Thanks, Matt. We really appreciate you. I know you guys are working just so hard and, um. Just being able to get in there and get your hands moving even quicker than you planned on. So just adjusting. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you guys for all your support.
I'm excited to see what everything looks like. Even if kids don't go back in the buildings, you're gonna let us go in and look at them, right?
Absolutely.
I know. Well, yeah. Sorry, just trying to think of myself and no one else at that moment.
Find a way.
It's really exciting. All right. Well, thanks, Matt. We'll let you go and we will move on to the next thing. Oops, sorry. I'm just pretending to talk. Moving on to six, superintendent's consent agenda. Six point one is the personnel report. Dr. Claudio, I'm presuming.
Yes, ma'am. I normally don't talk about the personnel report, um, but if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer the, the questions.
I have so many questions. Um. I think I need to just ask you all my questions. Um. Maybe, uh, over the phone or something. It just seems like we have a lot of licensed rec, uh, resignations. I know you always, um. Some of those go away and are hired or moved at a different school. And so, um, I'm not exactly sure, but it seems like, um, a lot of licensed staff are, are leaving. So.
So.
That always concerns me.
Yes, and so I, I appreciate you bringing that up. I was running the numbers based on where we were at last year and this year. And we're actually below about ten, eleven teachers below leaving the district this year than we were last year. So essentially we are, we're still kind of very high as far as teacher turnover is concerned, but we're actually lower than we were last year.
And wasn't last year lower than the year before?
Yes, that is correct. Last year, uh, the year before, so two years ago, there was, I think, two hundred and fifty-nine, sixty. Teacher resi, uh, licensed resignations. Last year was two hundred and twenty and some change. As of today, right now, based on this personnel report, we're at a hundred and sixty-seven teacher, uh, resignations. And so we'll be able to keep that running to, that running tally. And to put it in perspective, prior to, prior to the previous superintendent, when Mr. Miles was the superintendent. Our average turnover in the district was anywhere from about a hundred and twenty to about a hundred and fifty teachers leaving the district. And so if we continue the trend that we're going, we're gonna continue dropping and we're gonna see less and less. But the, the average range for us is anywhere from about a hundred and twenty to about a hundred and fifty teachers leaving every year. Now, under the previous, under the previous superintendent, we, we were as high as two fifty, almost two sixty, one ninety-seven. We were in, in the two hundreds for a couple of years. And so I understand your concern, Mrs. Orozco. I, I totally get it. One of the things that the superintendents have done this year is they look at the, the exit survey reports that all staff members get. And they actually included ESP this year, which is something that was never done previously. They are aware of schools where there is consistently high turnover. And so they've already addressed the principles at those particular schools. And so they're taking the necessary steps to reduce the teacher turnover every year.
So if I can ask a question, um, so what do we think is the main reason for these turnovers every year? I mean, I know some people are gonna leave, but is there like a, a main reason or something really specific as to why these teachers are leaving?
I think that has to do with when we look at the, the exit survey, it all depends on how people feel. And, and you know, one of the things that I say all the time, teachers do not leave districts, they leave leaders. And so one of the things that we have to take a look at is what is the capacity at each building with, with leadership? How are we supporting those leaders? So that way we can reduce the, the teacher turnover at each site.
Okay. That's fair. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And to further address that, just a bit with, you know, I don't wanna single anyone out or call anyone out, but we have had conversations and we made some adjustments. To address some of the situations we're seeing to help with that.
If you have those exit surveys, uh, categorized under whatever reason, doesn't really matter. Um, cause you get, can we have some of the copies of those redacted so that we can see what some of those reasons are that some of the personnel are leaving?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. And no, the, the surveys are anonymous and so we, we provide comments based on, and people provide comments knowing and that they trust in the system that is totally anonymous. So you'll see, you'll see the statements for what they are. There won't be any, anything hidden.
Okay, yeah, sounds good to me.
Thanks, Dr. Claudio. I think every time the personnel report's up, I have a bunch of questions. It doesn't change. I think seeing some improvement in numbers, we appreciate, but we know that our students' growth is directly affected by, um, stable staff. And what that looks like. So that's always a concern and I don't think it'll stop being a concern. And I know we were trying to address a. And I know we were trying to address a lot of that with pay, obviously. People are happy to have a job right now, we, things are beyond our control. But I think as we move forward, we would expect, I know I would, I'm not speaking for the entire board, we would expect to see those numbers continually drop and reduce and as see our teachers stay longer. And on the flip side, I don't know if you could, because this is a number I haven't seen, can we see the numbers of longevity in the district? Like, we just see who goes away, but is there any way to see numbers of how long certain, how long employees have been with us?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and these are things that will be more helpful, so we can kind of like gauge better what, you know, just get a whole picture. Because, yeah, I'm just kind of thinking and seeing what, you know, we can do to kind of curve that. But like you said, Mr. Claudio, it kind of resonated, because I truly believe that people leave leaders as well, so that's huge. But just to have that information, you know, for the board to kind of go over and look at, that will be helpful, so thank you.
So I'll easily be able to provide the exit survey results, the statements, and I'll also provide a breakdown of how long people have been in the district, licensed staff have been in the district.
Thank you. I know, obviously, people that are staying may be the key to how we keep them. We have a lot of staff that have been in the district a long time, and I think we forget that they're probably the magic piece that helps us move forward, and I don't think they get enough credit because they're here because of their passion or whatever it is, but I would love to take some time for that. I don't have any other questions, do you have any? I don't know where Linda went.
Yeah, and I'd love to be able to provide some background, some context to some of the numbers, and so that way you have a better understanding, instead of just looking at the raw data, be able to provide some context, so that way when you look at those numbers, they make a little bit more sense.
Right.
And I know this is a passion for the board, can you hear me? So maybe on a board retreat or a next one of the board Saturday sessions, Dr. Claudio could do just even an hour presentation of kind of historically where we've been and what our goals and what we've done to try to change those outcomes and where we're seeing success and where we're still struggling.
I would love to do that.
Yeah, that would be cool.
Thank you. Linda?
I'm good.
Okay.
Making my notes, so we don't forget to do this on a retreat.
No, I think that would be well worth the time spent. I know it's something that we always kind of drill into and we probably just need a little more information, so I appreciate it. If you guys don't have anything else, I'll move on to six point two.
Good.
I'm good.
Thank you, Dr. Claudio. Six point two, financial report. Shelley, is Shelley still there?
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay, I was there. You're muted, Shelley.
So what you have before you, we are looking at the February financial reports, and sorry, just getting my head back to February seems so long ago already, but happy to have, we have the February, March financial statements, reports in the queue and ready to go, but I'd be happy if there's any particular, as of February, any questions, that may be the easiest way to start.
I agree.
I'm still mind boggled at the last thing you asked us to look at, so I don't know that I have anything right now.
Yeah, I don't have anything, I have no questions on it right now.
Yeah, I looked it over and I'm, you know, it's the usual report, and it might be more interesting to see how it looks in a couple of months now that the impact of COVID might resurrect.
Yeah, definitely gonna want to see those numbers later on in the summer.
All right, Regina, did you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
All right, if everyone's good. It'd help if I didn't unmute myself and mute myself again, pressing the wrong buttons.
You're good.
All right, I would ask for a motion in regards to the superintendent's consent agenda.
I move to approve the superintendent consent agenda items as stated, and I think somebody was reading it too.
It was me, but I second.
All right. Seconded by Mrs. English, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Ayes have it, motion carries, and we're gonna get to seven. This seems like it's lasted so long, maybe because we're all alone in front of our computers. We're only an hour behind now.
Oh, great.
Board consent agenda, so we have two items on the, well, one item on the consent agenda, meeting minutes. I just want to say, it's so nice that our meeting minutes aren't crazy anymore, just note to self. Has everyone had a chance to look over the minutes? Any questions? Is everyone good?
No questions, no corrections.
I'm good.
You're good.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I can only see like two faces in my own on the screen at a time, so I don't get to see everyone, I don't know what's happening there. All right, so if everyone's good, no more questions, I would ask for a motion.
I move to approve the board consent agenda items as stated.
I'll second.
All right, look at the guys, the girls went first and the guys went, no.
Hey, ladies first.
Move by Mr. Severt, seconded by Mr. Williams, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We're getting somewhere, so excited, it's moving down the page. Eight, monitoring board performance, so we do have a few things to go over in the annual work plan. I think we just looked at some dates that Shelley suggested for Thursday, May 28th and June 18th. I think we also needed to make sure that we finish our superintendent evals before the end of May. So, my own, okay.
June 18th is already a scheduled board meeting, so that wouldn't be an additional, that would be just when we have you vote on the final budget that we propose. So the only one that we would be adding is the May 28th, I think, is that what you said, Shelley?
Yeah, it's either move them, whatever the May date is, the 14th, I think, or have another one on the 28th, would be a good recommendation.
So I think my suggestion was going to be, May 16th, we have a board retreat, so we can finish up our superintendent evals. So I don't know how everyone feels, but if we move the May 14th to May 28th and then have a retreat on May 16th.
That works for me.
Say those dates again, Jeanie.
So we would nix the May 14th, so we wouldn't meet on May 14th, instead we'd meet May 16th.
Okay.
And then move the board meeting to May 28th, so then we'd have a May 16th and a May 28th.
Yes.
I think Steve's still looking at his calendar, so is Cory.
I'm looking, I'm looking through the, I'm good.
So as far as May 16th, I'm not quite sure what's really happening with emerged, but we've been meeting virtually on that, wait, so that's not a graduation date, so it's okay, I'll make arrangements around that. So, yeah, I'll, I'll be good for the 16th, if we change it to the 16th?
Yes, May 16th. For, yeah, but we're not gonna, we're gonna cancel May 14th. Right, okay, so it's a retreat on May 16th. Linda was good, Regina's good, Cory's good.
What, what time, is that an all day or?
Yeah, it would probably be all day, because we'd need to discuss and then we need to have the supers come in.
Okay, I'm just putting that in my calendar, so I can make sure I'm on the same page.
May 16th is the page we all need to be on.
That's right, May 16th, I'm following, I'm tracking.
Okay, and then per Shelley's suggestion, moving that board meeting to May 28th, correct?
Correct.
All right.
I'm open, May 28th, or was that something we were agreeing on right now?
Yeah, so Shelley needs us to take care of some financial pieces, so she asked that we move the May meeting to the 28th.
Gotcha.
So I'm noticing that we would normally have had some monitoring and indicator reports in April, are we moving those to May or into June?
I was hoping we can have a day and a half retreat in June, so we could go over everything. I think that was my suggestion, I'm open to all suggestions, I don't know what everyone else is thinking, but I think we still have a lot of work to catch up on. I don't know how we're gonna do it if we don't like meet on like a Friday night and an all day Saturday and just work hard.
Well, we already have a, an Aspen team building scheduled for the 13th of June.
Yes, we do, I see that.
I'm in the wrong year, so I don't see it, let me get there.
Where are you all seeing the 13th at?
Because I'm so sorry, having so many issues.
13th of June is an Aspen retreat.
Yeah, from 08 to 1.
Hold on, okay, yeah, that's in my, that's already in my calendar, my phone, yeah.
I don't see what you all are seeing, honestly.
June 13th, well, it's in my phone, I don't see it on here.
It's not on the work plan.
Yeah, it's probably not on your.
I'm like, I ain't got nothing, okay, so the 13th, so we would still need to figure out what, are we gonna bring Aspen group out and then still do board work? Because I think we have a whole day of board work. Am I wrong? Am I just making up stuff?
You're probably right, we've got a lot of catching up of monitoring and indicators and, and actually, we can't, we can't do one of the indicators till we do the monitoring on 13. And then, yeah, it's just, it's starting to snowball.
It is, and so I want to make sure that we are able to catch up in a meaningful way. I don't know if you guys have other suggestions, if we want to have the, do all, some of that monitoring or indicator reports on the May 28th date?
I would suggest for two and 13, we do those in May. Two is superintendent's succession plan, and 13 is marks, and those are pretty straightforward, both of those, and so I think we could easily put them in May, and then that would allow us then in June to look at the monitoring, or no, the indicators sitting back to back with the monitoring. So if we did the monitoring on those in May, we could do indicators then when we're meeting for an all day in June.
I like it.
And then we can get back on track with those.
Now, there's not, they aren't even on there for indicators. I just got left off. So the indicators, well, those are indicators.
Yeah, we're supposed to be doing monitoring in April, but we didn't meet, so we're already a month behind on those.
Okay, so you want to monitor them in May and do the indicators?
No, monitor in May and indicators in June.
Okay, got you.
So for our June meeting, whatever day that is, I don't know if we're good with the 13th. I know there was a lot of dates conflicting, you had a wedding and you had a wedding.
Yeah, I'm still good with the, with the 13th, and as far as Aspen goes, if we have them scheduled, if we're doing indicators, that's really pretty involved in them, whether we do the team building a couple of hours or, or adjust it, wouldn't necessarily be bad to, to continue to keep them scheduled and stay on track with the contract.
So would we still need a Friday evening on the 12th?
We could, we could do the evening as the team building part if we wanted to, and then, and then stick to more board work on Saturday or have a longer day Saturday and it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, that might be a good idea, do the team building.
Hold on.
Not before.
We had something on the 12th of what?
June, just in the evening.
Oh, just a suggestion. Okay.
Because if we're gonna be doing, if indicators and stuff is part of what we're covering on Saturday, then we have to have admin staff available to that meeting also.
And I think the intention that Jeanie had mentioned earlier was to have, to have cabinet, to have some staff involved in, and I don't know that if Jeanie's had discussion with Dr. Berhansel about that or Mr. Roderson.
I did, I sent them an email.
And my assumption was that you had had that, so I guess that answers your question, Linda, that, yes, that the intent was to have them, are there already?
Okay.
And I would say by then, hopefully, we have a lot more information about what the fall might look like for us, and so it might be a good opportunity for different folks from cabinet to give updates on what that is going to look like going forward, just to keep you informed. And then for things like Dr. Claudio's report on staff, if you want to hear special reports for certain people, it'd just be a good time to kind of catch up with some of that information.
That's a good point.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. To go back to Norma had asked a question earlier about if it was, if the May meeting, because there's only one, we should, it should be combined, and probably at this point, even if we have the forum that we do now or a work session forum, we should probably have them all combined so that we're able to vote on, on anything necessary at those times. So maybe, just as a suggestion, we should probably call them all combined meetings for, for a little while.
Well, if we, if we talk about some of the stuff at the retreat, would that not count as, you know, we would have covered some of that at the, at a work session, but if we already talk about it at the retreat, we may or may not need to, I don't know. In, I'm looking at May, May and June, actually, we're gonna have a retreat prior to the regular meeting, so either way.
Well, if the information's covered at the retreat and it's just simply on consent, you know, the heavy lifting work is already, and the discussion's already been done, and the, the business meeting is just a formality of, of the vote.
Yeah, I think we're just gonna have to adapt and overcome with each meeting and see what happens at each one, and then whatever doesn't work, we're gonna have to get to the next one with the goal of finishing everything up by June, by the June 13th retreat, and then starting back on track. But I think we have quite a few days confirmed, so we can at least do our superintendents justice by finishing their evals. So we have that on the calendar, we have the date that Shelley asked us to change on the 28th on the calendar, plus we'll do the monitoring of two and 13 at that time, and then June 13th, well, 12th in the evening, and then 13th, all day. So, we good? Is there anything extra?
Yes, there is.
I don't know, I can't hear what's, who's saying something.
This is John, it would be remiss if I didn't bring this back up, because we have a lot going on, May's full, June's filling up, we have a lot of things that have happened. But one of the things of importance that the board has expressed in the past is continuing our train around equity, and I just want to find out, it can be done online, it can be delivered remotely, I've talked with Regina Lewis, I don't want to press this, because May sounds like it's going to be a stressful month, but consider if you would, if there might be a three hour block we could carve out in June, or not start again until August. But I think it's important work to finish the seed level two and seed level three with Regina Lewis, especially since it looks like we may not be able to do diversity university in person. So I just wanted to bring that back to the board's attention and get some guidance from you all as to how you want to work with that.
Thanks, John, sorry, I don't know how to make everything work now. I think that schedules were really tight in June originally, obviously, I don't know if everyone's still getting married in June or what's happening.
Well, Jamaica got canceled, so.
Well, Jamaica got canceled, so.
Well, Corey's available. He can't go to Jamaica. But I think it would be within reason to find maybe even just three hours and late afternoon, early evening. I'm willing to take off an hour early from work or something. But I don't know what everyone else's schedule really looks like. I know Steve looks like he's, might be up in the air with what he has.
Yeah, I think I'm, I think June 6th is still like my one, my one drop dead date. As of, you know, things are very fluid, things are, we're getting information and things change pretty quickly every, every week. So, but as of now, yeah, the, the only bad date I have in June is the 6th.
And as I said, there's one other option that we pick it up again in August. We are going to offer it to more staff in the fall. But I want to have this, I don't want us to lose focus on this. And we do have staff members that participate in this with us, if you remember that also. So we can find some time in June. I could propose a few dates or we could wait till, I know July usually we don't meet. Regina has indicated that she, she'll work with us, whatever. So there are some options there as to where we could get the rest of this training in.
And my schedule is, is pretty open.
Regina?
Which month are we speaking of?
June. Do you have anything in late June? Would it be reasonable to do like a four, five, six? Is that, I guess, seven, huh? Four to seven?
So I, I don't have anything for late June. So my, my June schedule looks good, except for the 6th and the 7th.
Okay, so John, can you see if we can do something from like four to seven during the week in late June?
Absolutely.
Are we talking late, late June?
I don't know. Whenever works for you, Linda, tell us.
Well, I was hoping by late June I would be able to come back to the hottest state in the damn country for the month, the end of June into July, but.
So like the week of the 21st-ish?
That was when I was hoping to, to start coming back down this way.
So the week of the 14th?
If you want to do it like the earlier part of that week or something, or I, I can be more flexible than most other people's schedules, so whatever.
Gina is willing to do this online, so we would not be there in person. So I'll look at some dates in late June, starting around the week of the 21st, early that week, and see what she can possibly suggest.
Yeah, because, because you're tied up until about the 21st, Regina?
Of, of June? No, no, I'm good, except for the 6th and the 7th of June.
Oh, you're open and throughout.
Yeah.
Oh, he's talking about Dr. Lewis, that's why. I'm so confused.
What Regina?
Regina Lewis can do it online. The instructor for the thing.
Okay, we're Regina squared, technically. Right now, we're talking about Dr. Lewis. Not Dr. English.
I don't know what's wrong with it.
Send them to you as possibilities.
Thank you. Oh my gosh, too many Reginas.
I was so confused.
Move on, it's all good.
Okay.
If we've got our dates, I just want to be clear on a couple of little things on the, on the dates we've already set. On the annual plan, we were going to do the indicators for 10 in April. Are we moving that to June also?
Yes.
Okay, and then all the results, things that we were going to be getting are also moving to June?
We're going to have so much fun in June. It's going to be like a party.
Okay, because it's like 2.5, 2.1, et cetera, et cetera. And then I would ask that we either put DAC and NASBA in April as canceled or something, as well as those two meetings. So we still have a calendar that looks like we're having meetings and I have no idea what the 30th of March special board meeting was. I don't even think that's supposed to be on there.
I don't know what it was either, but I really don't know what day it is, so I don't think it matters.
So wait, so this June 4th date, is that, are we still doing that? June the 4th on here for?
No.
No?
No, I don't think so.
No, I think the goal is to do everything on the 12th and the 13th.
Yes.
Outside of the May 28th and then the retreat in May.
Okay, so this probably needs to be changed. Okay.
Norma's working hard. She's making.
Highlight it.
Is Norma totally confused?
No, I think she's doing good over there.
She's the only one that isn't confused.
The only one that's not confused. As soon as we say a date, she's got that date.
She's like, y'all stop talking.
I'm just going to put all the dates down, so.
I got arrows all over. I've got it, so we're good, okay?
I got arrows all over my copy.
Norma, can you put it all together and send it to us? Yes, I'll put it all together and send it out to you guys, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can keep it straight.
Yes.
Someone has to.
I get to do that.
We appreciate it so much. All right, do we have anything else on the annual work plan other than redoing the whole annual work plan? Are we good?
Isn't that enough?
Okay, all right, legislative updates. I know Shelley kind of went over this already, but. Do we have anything else?
They go back in session on Monday, so we'll have some more after Monday.
We're going to have a lot after Monday.
I think it's going to be really stressful to hear what they come up with. I would say I'm glad I'm not in their position right at this moment.
Yeah.
All right, I think.
I just realized that renewal of Aspen contracts should just been probably stuck under matters for board. It's kind of, rather than its own item.
Well, it, we're almost done, so we're just going to wrap it up. Nine, renewal of Aspen contract. Did everyone review? I know Norma sent out the contract. She asked us all for our signatures, our electronic signatures. We had, went over it at the retreat. And so Steve made sure that I was aware that we had to vote on it, which I wasn't, so. Any questions in regards to the contract?
I think all the changes, I mean, we discussed it pretty well at length at the, at the retreat and that had made some changes, some suggested changes. I think we had all agreed to pretty well. So I personally don't have anything.
I'm good.
I'm good.
I would just suggest when you all have your retreat in May or June, that you set the dates for the upcoming year when Aspen comes and kind of maybe agenda items so that it's really focused and kind of on the agenda versus, we need to get them back out and what are we going to meet about? So it can be more purposeful.
On purpose, yeah.
Fine, make it sound reasonable, Wendy. All right. And it doesn't have it on there, but I believe we all need to vote on this, so.
Even though, we, we got a, this is for next year, correct?
Yes.
So this is going to be June, first, 2020 to?
May 31st.
May 31st, 2021.
Isn't it July? But maybe not.
No, it had initially been June. I think it's, it's kind of always run like that. We're behind because we had missed a meeting and it, and it should have been on an agenda. In that April meeting is when, when we would have typically voted on it or, or the, or the.
Actually, the contract says dates July 1st through June 30th, 30th.
But the executive content says something different, so which dates are we going off of is the question. I would say the ones on the contract.
Right, the contract 2.0 says dates and logistics July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. Specific work dates to be determined.
Okay. So if we're all in agreement.
Would you like a motion?
Motion.
I got you, yeah. I moved, I moved to renew the Aspen Group contract from July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Williams, seconded by Mr. Sebert. We'll do an individual vote just for good measure, so. Mrs. Pugh?
Yes. Aye.
Oh, Mrs. English?
Aye.
Mr. Sebert?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
And Ms. Roscoe, aye. Looks like we're all in favor. Motion carries, a renewal of contract. And if, does anyone have anything else before we adjourn? Anything we forgot, didn't add?
I have nothing to add.
Nothing? Can we talk about your beard some more?
Oh, I have a red nose. I was out in the sun.
That was so funny. Okay, so I would ask for a motion. I'm 10.
Well, no, for the business, I would recommend a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second.
Woohoo. Moved by Mr. Sebert, seconded by Mrs. English. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yay, motion carries and good night.